Definitely.
It's one o'clock for a rarely scheduled city commission meeting Tuesday, August 7th. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am.
It's my turn to do the pledge and the invocation, so please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this great day that you have given us. Thank you for the recent moisture that you have provided to nourish our land. Please watch over us and guide us with wisdom during our meeting today to help lead us and guide our community in a positive direction. Be with our first responders that serve and protect us and keep us safe and keep our community safe and peace in our community. Also watch over those that serve and protect our nation in freedom. Amen. Any corrections to the minutes that were presented? None being, they'll be stand as they are presented. Item number five is public comment. This is a time that we have a public comment where individuals can come forward and speak to the commission that on items that are not on the agenda. Please come forward and state your name, and you do have five minutes. Okay, item number six.
Mayor and Commissioners, item six A, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a request from Ginger Sandell, Girl Scout Local Office, to waive the $100 park reservation fee for the reservation of Stevens Park on Friday, August 10th, 2018, for National Smores Day.
Somebody here from the organization, would you like to come forward and?
We're going to have hot dogs and STEM activities for the girls and families, and this is free to the public. We're going to have smores over barbecue grill.
And you're wanting this at the Stevens Park bandshell? And you're wanting to waive the fee? And the reason to waive the fee is? Okay.
Are you going to require us trash containers and all that? You need trash containers?
Was that in the, I didn't see that. Was that in the request?
No.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we approve, wa- waive the fee of $100 for Stevens Park to the Girl Scouts.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on that item? None. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you.
Item seven A, the City of Garden City has published a notice of public comment period on the proposed disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal for 2019 through 2023 for the federal aviation administration's funded contracts and/or agreements. Rochelle?
No, sure. Okay. Sure, we can do that. Sure, not a problem. Sure.
Whereas for 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, high-quality medical care to patients and residents of communities, delivering value to and having an impact on American healthcare system. Whereas as the country's largest primary care network, health centers are the healthcare home for most seventy million Americans and over two thousand million across the country, one every twelve and less, except for a community health center. Where health centers are a critical element, and the health centers are of both rural and urban populations, and often providing the only accessible and dependable place for primary care different from many, nationwide, and effective, who serve more than sixty residents, world-class health service. Whereas everyday health centers develop new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, which involve health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services, which are the challenges of their communities. Whereas health centers are governed by a patient-centric, holistic board, ensuring that the patients at each health center are engaged in their own healthcare decisions. Whereas health centers are locally owned and operated, to all businesses that serve its critical economic engine, health is a fundamental economy, by generating forty-five to sixty billion in economic impact, considering the country's most economically privileged communities. Whereas national health centers nationally, with more than twenty thousand people, including physicians, practitioners, physician assistants, and certified medical doctors, the work is part of a multidisciplinary, critical team designed to treat a whole patient. Whereas the health center model continues to permit effective means of overcoming barriers to healthcare access, improving directly in terms of insurance status, and doing so improves healthcare outcomes and reduces healthcare assistance costs. Whereas health centers reduce overall cost of care by offering remediation to chronic conditions, giving out the cost of the fact that setting on cost over the hours. Whereas health centers on the front lines of emerging healthcare crises, providing access to care for our nation's veterans, addressing the need of older residents, and responding to public progress and related health issues. Whereas natural health center week offers the opportunity to recognize America's nearly fourteen hundred health center organizations, with over ten thousand four hundred service delivery sites, their dedicated staff, more members of patients always responsible for their continued success in growth, since the first set of health centers opened their doors more than fifty years ago. Whereas through a national health center week, who celebrates the legacy of America's health centers and our intensive family health throughout Southwest Kansas, and a vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of America's healthcare system. We would ask for the city commission of Garden City, who would join us in proclaiming August 12th through the 18th of National Health Center Week, and also join us in encouraging all Americans and local citizens to take part in this week as the local health center and celebrating the important partnership between the American health centers and the community's incredible accomplishments. Any questions?
No. Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We make August 12th through the 18th, now the National Health Week, representing the community health centers.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That passed. Okay, moving on to item number seven A.
Again, Mayor and Commissioners, seven A, the City of Garden City has published a notice of the public comment period on the proposed DBE or disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal for the 2019, 2023, or for 2019 through 2023 for federal aviation administration funded contracts and/or agreements. Rochelle? She's not here, okay.
We don't have to take the attach. Do we have to take any action on this?
No, there's no action required. It's more for your awareness and to make people aware that the public comment period.
Is open.
Is open. Item seven B through seven E are reports from staff. If you've got any questions on those, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
Mr. Allen, I did have a question. Just, I recognize that, can you hear me okay on this? I'm still in and out. I recognize that the fire department's report reflects June activity, but I was wondering if Chief might be able to speak. I don't see Chief Shelton here, but, or if he had any information about any fireworks-specific related incidents? Just because I know there was a lot of public concern and question about that, if we could just kind of get a general overview of how that went.
Absolutely, and I'll invite either of the chiefs up. I know that we anticipate on one of your upcoming commission meetings to have a manager's report on, on that topic, but just to speak quickly, anecdotally, if they can both share what they experienced.
Chief, you want to come forward, please? Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Our initial reports are there was less calls or service complaints. I believe it was in the area of fifty calls during time frame. As Nats said, we are, and I saw Chief Shelton preparing reports, our schedules are conflicting on when they're called and be available. So, we are working on a report for that, but the calls were serviced with us, and in this report we include information on fireworks related injuries that I think came from ER personnel, not names, just getting out. The call for down, I think the year before was about sixty-six, so our strategy is that appears to be working as far as.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Then item eight is the meetings of note. We'll just call some attention to some public meetings. On August 10th, Senator Moran will be in town at 9:00 AM. For about thirty minutes, there'll be a interaction with the commission and some staff on the topic of the Southwest Chief, and then he'll be available for media questions. That is open to the public. People are welcome to attend and listen, and then also be part of the question and answer part towards the end, but it is a, a trip that the senator's making throughout the western part of the state with a lot of stops. He squeezed this in because of the timeliness of the Southwest Chief topic, and we certainly appreciate his willingness to do so and his support of that issue. The annual Southwest Kansas Coalition meeting is going to be held here in Garden City, the evening of August 29th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, because the majority of the commissions of both the City of Garden City, the City of Dodge City, and the City of Liberal will be in attendance. This is a public meeting, and folks, again, are welcome to attend and listen. So with that, I think we're ready for nine A appropriations ordinance number 2464-2018A, if approved.
I'll make the motion to approve appropriation ordinance 2464-2018A.
I'll second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. That item passed.
We'll move on from, or skip over ten A for the time being, because it's not quite 1:30. We're ready for ten B. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a rezone R2, single-family residential district to C2 commercial, general commercial district for property located at 1106 North Main Street, Garden City, Kansas. If approved, this ordinance number would be 2796-2018.
I bet you have the complete staff orders and the applicant before you. As we stated, this is a rezoning request. We developed a forward plan in commission, at their July 19th, 2018 meeting, to all seven members of the planning commission presently in favor of this rezoning coverage plan. Staff recommendation is also approved of the coverage plan and amendments to the rezoning request. Your alternative for these days to approve the ordinance, which we have approved, the coverage plan and the rezoning.
Quick question. We were talking, yesterday during the county commission meeting, there was discussion kind of pertaining to this item, about the signage and stuff. Is there a way, instead of rezoning this, because there's other, there's other churches in the community that will be getting signage as well, could we waive this instead of rezoning it? Could we waive the signage ordinance? And, and for this particular, for this type of sign? Because what you were talking about yesterday is we're having to, going to be looking at this anyway because of some of the Supreme Court rulings that kind of have taken effect, so. And then, we were going to get together with the county commission and possibly look at this kind of because of the signage or the electronic signs in the community and, in the county as well. Come together.
The applicant does it because of life for this.
Okay.
We reviewed all of the options we have.
Sure.
On this, and based on differences in what we talked about yesterday as far as like type of testing boards.
Sure.
This location is particularly located on arterial road, commercial and most sides.
Okay.
The applicant is aware of the situation, and they're applying to the panel of this. You want to have, I say statutes, the authorities, we have to weigh the zoning requirements, you have to go back, send it back to the planning commission, and then ask the applicant to withdraw.
Okay.
Your application, so at this point, it's time to do the public hearing process. And the other issues that will come up, that we will need to open up the address for electronic message boards, is particularly to the locations, because what's very unique about this location is that this particular facility is located directly in a commercial zone.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas I think the majority of our other locations, religious institutions are located in residential, surrounded by residential.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you'll have to weigh that out.
Sure. Well, I just didn't want to start rezoning, spot rezoning type things because of, because of signage is the thing. So, I was just, because there was that discussion yesterday, I just wanted to bring that to see what, what the thought process was, but.
This is unique in the fact that this isn't creating a spot zone when we rezonize. Other locations would, and they probably would meet the criteria, say statute criteria.
Sure. Okay.
But in this case, they do need that criteria, and as a religious institution that's, I don't know if it doesn't, their taxes or the other statuses.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was another option there. I know it went through the whole process and everything, but I thought, well, because there's other institutions looking at these electronic signs, and just good information to know. I'll make the motion then to approve the ordinance 2796-2018.
Second.
Commissioner Fankhauser seconded that motion. Any other discussion on that item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passed.
Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve amendments to the Garden City zoning regulations related to lot coverage and setbacks in residential districts. If approved, this would be ordinance number 2797-2018.
Hi again.
As you have the complete staff board application for you, this amendment, just to kind of just go through a little bit of this to give clarification on exactly what's happening with this amendment. The planning commission, at their May 17th, 2018 meeting, staff asked the planning commission to help clarify setbacks at yard requirements on corner lots. The planning commission had been clarified and determined how staff is to determine the product of the housing directive, and directed staff to proceed with many of the regulations for lot coverage, and to continue to interpret setbacks the same way as staff has done for the past twenty-two years. As staff has perceived, processed building permits, lot coverage issues, and rear yard setbacks have prevented several property owners from having the coverage. The current lot coverage is 50%, and with rear yard setbacks, property owners have been able to add additions, storage, or parking under their coverage. Staff is proposing that the lot coverage be increased to 7% and the rear yard setback be decreased to 10%. In R1 and R2 districts to help improve flexibility for homeowners. Increasing lot coverage will help property owners that have smaller lots and little off-street parking to add garages, carports, driveways, and other items to their property. Homeowners associations may restrict greater than minimum zone regulations, however, they enforce their own regulations. All new additions will provide a drainage plan as currently acquired by the building permit code requirements, and to address any drainage issues. This is divided up into two sections, because zoning, as far as lot coverage covers, there's, there's three different things that all add up together. Zoning regulations ensure addressing, we're in the planning issues, addressing subdivision areas, which has to do with new settlements, and dividing that way into, and engineering requirements that are code-based and adopted by city owners. And so, the practicality of this zoning amendment is, how do you want your neighbors to look at this? And that's really what the planning commission considered, and we can give this recommendation for you today. The planning commission, at their July 19th meeting, recommended approval of the amendment with a six-to-one vote on all planning commissioners present. And at this time, the alternative for the governing body may approve the amendment as approved. The governing body may approve of the amendment or changes, or the governing body may not approve.
Caleb, presently it's 25 feet for a backyard?
Twenty, the 25 feet are 20%.
For 20%. For one and two, though, R1 and two, it's 25.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. So this is quite a change.
I think most, we, we kind of looked at permits, the number of permits that were being pulled for items that would apply, was being applied to, and it would be roughly about 2% of the projects that would become, and actually probably use this to help them give in to the ones. What we researched in other communities, other communities already have it as high as 80%. That was initially staff's thought, but each community, if you do their own, and talk to the legislation, it's not like the planning commission felt 80% is too much. It felt 70%.
What about the garages? Do they still, if you enter from the rear, it has to be 20 foot, doesn't it?
Yeah, you still have to, even if you do build a garage, you still have to have your driveway with a 30-foot radius if you're parallel to the park, to the alley, or if you're directly in front of it, you can directly opt out.
20 feet, so.
So that's still.
Be a little tough to get a garage in there if you only had 10 feet.
Yes. Most of the, most of the properties that we see right now, most of the homes that are being built are being built on 75 by 110 blocks, new subdivisions. Where we see most of these divisions, they're four, zone fields, you know, lots of 40, 15, 16, 25 by 140 people.
Why they adapt?
The width.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2797-2018.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item?
I just wanted to say thank you for all of the research and the detail, and also talking me through all of the different documents. So I think this was really well thought out, and you did some great, great work here with your department, so thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
There was, it wasn't an unanimous vote, did that change the voting requirements? If this were to pass, or if anyone wanted to sit in the vote, is it a bit more dissent than that?
No.
No. Good question, though. Any other discussion? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passes. Thank you.
Item 10D, the governing body's asked to consider and approve a resolution establishing a date and time for a public hearing regarding the rural housing incentive district for Columbus Edition. Melissa?
Hello, Commissioner, I am the public speaker for you. We're asking to set a public hearing for the Columbus Edition Rural Housing District. The date and time established in the resolution is September 2, 2012, Japan. A preliminary copy of the development plan, which is under the local agreement, is to be considered at the time and is included in the number of the review. This development will be supposed to run under the 15th of August, and then also have plans to release in the next few weeks. The options for you today are, one, approve the resolution, or, two, get all the funding and the map to the tax revision, stack arguments of the development.
And that resolution number?
2740-2018.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution number 4740-2018.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item?
So, I just want to clarify. So the public hearing gives people an opportunity to what?
Come in either the second or the third meeting, or the second or the third meeting. It just gives a, maybe a time period for people to come in and review what is current, including tax entities, to review that development plan of health.
Thank you.
Is this the third RHID that we've approved this year? Are we on three for the year, or four? Four, okay, that's a.
But it's adding housing to our community, which is a good thing.
Absolutely.
Which kind of helps us on track, because what do we need currently? Where, where are we at? Just kind of right off the top of your head, not putting it on the spot or anything, but.
Four hundred some units overall for the year, and that's built units, so this is really setting us up for a speech conference meeting. I think we recommend this year, and we'll share some.
Yeah, two.
Some of the ones that you already approved, I think you have a lot of new commitments to add at the toll. Those houses just haven't been completed yet.
Okay, sounds good. There has been a motion, second. Any other discussion? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passes. We got two minutes until our public meeting.
Would you like to start another item, Mayor, or wait until the public hearing time?
I'd hate to start something that's in the middle of it, is the thing.
I think the rest of them probably will take longer than two minutes.
Can we go on to item G for the consent agenda?
Yeah, sure, that'd be great. We don't anticipate any changes.
Then we aren't sitting here staring at each other in complete silence for a while, as I'm trying to make up time another two minutes, so we can drag this out on the consent agenda. Maybe somebody might have an item, yeah, maybe somebody might have a discussion item in the consent agenda.
Item 12G, if there's no items to be pulled off, it'd be the consent agenda. The appropriate motion would be approval of G1 through nine, if you don't have anything you'd like to take off separately.
I'll make the motion to approve consent agenda G1 through nine.
Second.
There's a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. I think we're close enough to the 1:30 that we could probably start our 1:30 public hearing.
I'll step, step down there.
Make it noted that Commissioner Fankhauser stepped down from the bench on this item.
And walking slowly to get us to 1:30.
Yes. Yes.
Item ten A, mayor and commissioners, is a public hearing on the creation of a community improvement district. Upon closing of the public hearing, the governing body is asked to consider approval of an ordinance creating an improvement, a community improvement district for Fulton's Founders Brewery, Inc. If approved, the ordinance number would be twenty-seven ninety-eight dash two thousand and eighteen. So, at this point, gabbling in, the, the public hearing, allowing anybody to speak, and I think that'll include a staff presentation as well, when the public comment is concluded, gabble out of the public hearing, and then the commission's in a position to consider the ordinance.
So, it is one-thirty, so I'll open the public hearing.
Commissioner Finkhauser, on both sides?
Yes.
This is the final step in your actions to create a community improvement district for Fulton's Founders Brewery, to start sort of requiring, Commissioner, that we have a public hearing in this process, which you authorize on July third, adopted position twenty-seven thirty-four, which will be eighteen. Basically, this is a single property, community improvement district, which has, I would like to oppose, if approved, an additional one percent sales tax on that business, nobody else would be affected by this, and it has no effect on any other community improvement districts that exist or may come to fruition. See if anybody gets here.
Anybody you want to come forward and speak on this?
Come talk.
Come talk.
We need to have somebody talk.
Sure.
One of the purposes is so that we can continue to do improvements on that property, or even look at properties beside us that maybe we would like to purchase and move into as this is, as we're building it. We put in a pretty major investment in this thing. You know, I'm really liking the comments I'm hearing from people on the street, things like that, and I also like that other people are considering now, maybe shooting all side of the shopping stuff. That's the purpose of our one percent, is to try and keep us on top of things and kind of help us improve that area.
And just for the record, state your name, so we...
John Chaplin.
Thank you, that's all right. So, everybody knows?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for investing in downtown, and we'll see how this goes.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to comment on this item?
I will note that when we started this, earlier this, we cost us, it was one point one more. A month ago, it was one point three three six, but today it's one point five.
You better hurry up and get done, John.
That could be scary, yeah. It's exponentially expanding. So, does the, so does the sales tax, so the minute they open the business, that's when it takes effect, or is it going to affect as of today's vote, or how does that work?
The Department of Revenue requires a ninety-day notice, and then the effective day will be the first day of the quarter following that ninety-day notice. What this ordinance proposes is an effective date generally first, you know, back to... So, work fast.
Mr. Cottrell, I had a question as well. So, we, we established the district for this business, let's say then, and I guess my question is, can you have a district within a district? So, let's say all of downtown decides to, to join, or petition for a CID to do some downtown, something down the line. Would that district then be excluded because you draw the boundaries around that, as long as this is in effect, or could it be included, a district within a district?
Most likely, my speculation is you would exclude this property so that, you know, sales tax within downtown is the same regardless of your business. Otherwise, in the brewery, it would be an extra two percent. That, that could be the option, that property owner would be included in the expanded district.
They could be, okay.
So, I just want to clarify, so if, and Mr. Chaplin, thank you for your investment in downtown, I'm excited about that, but, so, so if he expands his business, will he have to expand the CID, so he'll have to come back, or how does that work? Because it looks like it's just this property.
If they were to purchase an adjacent property...
They'd have to come.
... expand or a, a second business or something like that, it would require going through this process again. And essentially, at that stage, it would be separate CID, the, the twenty-three percent cost.
I'm happy that we have the option to be able to do that in that downtown district, particularly on, on that end of town, where growth has been slow, and, and anytime we can get foot traffic in that area is going to also increase probably more businesses wanting to develop that area also. So, I'm, I'm happy that they're, they're taking the, a risk, you might say, but I think it's, it will materialize into a great risk and, and it will help that end of town.
That's correct, and certainly, you've got some other downtown business owners that investing as well, so.
Any other discussion or comments? I'll close the public hearing, then.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, then your alternatives are to either adopt or not, or you could defer it to a later date, but in order to, to meet implementation of this sales tax, we would request and recommend approval today.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number two seven nine eight dash two zero one eight, creating the Fulton's Founders Brewery Community Improvement District in the City of Garden City.
There has been a motion by Commissioner Burns, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Dale. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passes. Thank you.
You want to jump to eleven A while I'm up? Well, that's the next one up anyway, so. I'll stay here.
He's walking fast.
Item eleven A, the governing body's asked to consider and approve a developer's agreement with Fulton Founders Brewery, Inc.
At your May meeting, you approved a memorandum of understanding about this project. Oh, came back too soon.
Yeah. Please note that Commissioner Finkhauser is not on the bench for this item as well. Okay.
Okay. The MOU laid out two sources of financial incentive through the city, one being the community improvement district you just passed, the second being the neighborhood revitalization program. They have applied for the NRP, so there are two, two separate pots of money that are, will be available to them. Conservatively speaking, the community improvement district has the potential to generate approximately three hundred and thirty-five thousand. If, if you're optimistic, it could be somewhere close to half million dollars that that sales tax would generate and be reimbursed to them. The neighborhood revitalization program is based on the incremental growth in their property taxes, and we just don't have an estimate for that yet, because that valuation won't be set until later this year, so. But that is an administrative process and requires no action by the governing body, so. The developer's agreement was prepared by the city's bond counsel, Mary Carson, and has been reviewed by the developer, and we recommend approval.
Entertain a motion for approval of the developer's agreement?
I move that we approve the developer's agreement.
I'll second.
Been a motion by Commissioner, and your second by Commissioner Burns. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve A, the governing body is asked to review and consider options for sanitary sewer rate adjustments. Mike?
Good afternoon, commissioners and mayor. Since we're supposed to introduce ourselves, I'm Mike Muirhead, the Public Utilities Director, probably the shortest one to try out this podium yet today. What we're coming forward today was a request for you to consider an adjustment to the sanitary sewer rates. A little bit of background, all of this information was in your packet, and I, there's almost an overwhelming amount of stuff there, so I'm going to try to summarize that. In August of twenty sixteen, we had professional engineering consultants, PEC Engineering, come in and do an evaluation of the wastewater treatment plant to determine what improvements were necessary and be required to enhance the longevity of the plant and to give us an estimate of what those expenditures would be. PEC was, looked at, they were directed to look at all areas of the plant to improve efficiencies and address existing issues, as well as the treatment process. PEC performed an onsite review of pretty much everything, the HVAC, electrical equipment, the operational equipment of the plant, and this was done by all of the necessary engineering disciplines to make sure that they were done correctly. In the report, which was in your packet, there's about a, excuse me, about a fifty-page report there, and it listed high, medium, and low improvements that needed to be made. Probably, if you totaled them all up, there's probably fifty to sixty items that were addressed. Some of them are extremely minor, even to the extent of removing some of the vines that were growing on some of the, some of the facilities, and then others are much more expensive, like repairing some of the electrical facilities at the plant. In addition to this, in the fall of twenty seventeen, we found that the thirty-inch sanitary sewer interceptor that serves much of the city was failing. It actually had collapsed at one point, and we made the necessary temporary repairs to get it back into service. Anyway, we, we're, we're in the process of bidding that out now. We'll open bids next week on the replacement of that thirty-inch sanitary sewer line, and between the sanitary sewer line, the thirty-inch line, and the necessary improvements at the wastewater plant, combined, those things are going to cost in excess of two million dollars, which brings us to why we want to talk about possible rate adjustments to sanitary sewer. The current sanitary sewer rate income is not sufficient to support the necessary bonds that's going to be necessary to pay for these improvements. The anticipated estimated cost, the estimated cost of the bonds are going to be right around two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars per year, and that would be over a fifteen-year term. So, in our current sewer rate structure, there are two components. We have the minimum monthly base charges, which covers the city's fixed annual expenditures and includes debt service, and then the wastewater rates is based upon how much water you actually use and actually runs through your, the sewer system to the plant. What we're recommending you to consider is adjusting the minimum base rates for all customers on sanitary sewer. We put together several different options for you to consider in your packet. They range, excuse me, anywhere from no adjustment, if that's what you choose to do. If you chose to not make any adjustment to the sanitary sewer rates, we would draw down the cash reserves, and within a few years, there would be no reserves left to draw from, so that's the other reason we're here, is to let you know that staff's recommendation is there needs to be some sort of adjustment. With the different options we listed, the first adjustment was you could adjust all rates, all customers, by a dollar twenty-five effective October first, twenty eighteen, and then again, a dollar twenty-five in October first of twenty nineteen. That would give us one half a year in twenty, this year, of that dollar twenty-five rate, and then the dollar twenty-five after that, which effectively would be a two dollar and fifty cent increase every year thereafter. Not every year, two fifty, but that would be the, that would be the sum of that. Another option we presented was just do a two, two dollar and fifty cent month adjustment effective October first of twenty eighteen. There'd be no stair step, it just goes into effect October. The other one was a three dollar per month increase, another one was three dollars and fifty cents, and then, of course, any variance of what you may want to recommend, that we attempt to, to try to do, or to do nothing. Just as a, and as a fiscal note, the alternative number one would generate approximately a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars during the first year, and then three hundred and, roughly three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars every year thereafter. The two dollar and fifty cent increase would be approximately three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars a year. Three dollars would be three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars a year. Alternate four, a three dollars and fifty cent a month increase would generate four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. And then, of course, if you choose, if you direct us to look at a different amount, we would need to run the numbers on the different amounts. The fifteen-year bond payment, like I stated earlier, is estimated to run right at two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars per year, so effectively, it would, it would be, that's why we didn't give you a lower number, because it doesn't make sense to raise rates, not high enough to cover that debt cost. I also included in your packet, just for your reference, a comparison of other communities and what they charge for sanitary sewer base charges. Current, these are our current rates. Currently, Garden City for residential is seven dollars a month, and commercial is twelve dollars a month. In comparison, Dodge City charges seventeen oh one per month for both, Liberals fourteen fifty per month for both, Lakin ten forty for residential and fifteen sixty for commercial, Holcomb is ten fifty for residential, fifteen seventy-five for commercial, Wichita's nine fifty-one for both, Hutchinson is twenty-four forty-eight for both, Hayes is sixteen ninety for both, and Topeka's ten sixty-six for both. Just to give you an idea of where we would fall in, you know, our, the cost of us running our wastewater treatment plant, typically, that's what those base charges are for. So, we've done a very good job so far, and it's just, we're here to have you consider adjusting rates.
Mr. Muirhead?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
And, and I, I recognize, too, if you, I think I read in the packet that the base charge hasn't been raised since two thousand and ten, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I did have a question about, in considering alternative three and four, and maybe I got a little lost in the numbers that were presented in the report, are those recommendations, obviously, that would cover the bond service on this estimate, are you recommending or presenting three and four in, as a, as just a means so that we have some extra money? God forbid there's, you know, unaccounted for future expenses and not having to come back and raise it again next year and the following year? I just was trying to understand the need for, you know, maybe even those higher raises.
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's why I put that in there, so you could have some idea what those additional, those higher rates would generate and how far, and you look at some of the, the spreadsheets that we put together, how far out that generates revenue to cover any additional costs that may come up from time to time at the wastewater plant. You know, today, I think, with the improvements that's suggested, we make those today, we're probably good for several years. However, you never know when something may come up, and I, I think it's prudent to, in my view, to adjust them out far enough to where I don't have to come back every year and ask for more. On the other hand, you may direct us to whatever you direct us here to raise it to, if you choose to, and then come back every year with a smaller adjustment, so that we don't get stuck waiting ten years to do another adjustment and have it be a two dollar and fifty cent or higher number.
So, I have a couple of questions after.
Go ahead.
So, would this reduce the number, the years of the bond, or you're still recommending the fifteen-year bond, it would just reduce the payment if we did the increased amounts, or?
We would probably, we would, I would work with Melinda from Service and Finance, we would probably still leave it as a fifteen-year bond, and then any excess revenues would just be, go into cash reserves, and then at some point in time, if you guys decided that the reserves were high enough, or you wanted to do something different, we would, but the, the bonds that we... But the, the bonds that we were considering, we're going to be considered with water bonds and some general obligation bonds and it was a 10 or a 15-year term. And we just, we could certainly look at either if you wanted a shorter term, but.
Well, and the second question is, so do you have a reserve amount that you would, that, you know, I know that we've talked about reserve amounts before. Is there a reserve amount that you are shooting for to hold or is there? Because I know when we went through budgeting that there was an amount that was mentioned.
Go ahead. Typically, we try to go for a three-months operating budget, whatever that would be in the wastewater. I honestly don't know that number off the top of my head, I apologize. And that would cover whatever it would cost, take to run the treatment plant and the employees and, you know, gas, electric and all of that for three months, period. And I'm here to answer any additional questions you may have. I do apologize, there's a lot of information in that packet and tons of numbers and it can get confusing and, but in, you know, to summarize, under the fiscal note, I think is, would help you if that's helpful.
It was a great report, Mr. Muirhead.
I'll make a motion.
Scared me a little bit, but I enjoyed it.
I'll make the motion that we increase the wastewater base charge rate class to, by $2.50 per month effective October 1st, 2018.
I second that motion.
There's a second, any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
So the Commission's aware that that action, we have to change it by ordinance and of course, there wasn't an ordinance in this packet. So your direction will create another step, which is the creation of an ordinance that would have to be considered by the Commission again. And so between now and then, there's, you know, certainly time to take additional input or adjust your thinking heading into the consideration of the ordinance.
It just seems like option, or alternative number two will get us to where we need to on the bonding and everything. I, I think instead of waiting every 10 years and then we have these huge rate jumps because of issues coming up, maybe look, maybe not annually, but maybe look, well, maybe look annually just to kind of see where everything's at. So maybe if we do have to adjust slightly, because when we do these, these increases, I definitely hear it from the consumers and stuff that it's like, I mean, they don't under, you know, it's been great for 10 years, but then we, we
Sure.
Adjust it by now $2.50 and it's kind of a price shock, it seems like to people. Maybe if we can analyze that a little better and come back maybe yearly or bi-yearly or something, instead of waiting 10 years and then all of a sudden it's like, oh, by the way, you know.
What we could do if it would meet your recommendations, every year when we come in with budgets, we could then adjust, we could tell you then where the rates are at and where we think the revenues are going to fall and whether or not an adjustment may need to be made.
To me, that would make more sense. I think it also gets us to that goal of having that three months of operating.
Sure.
So I think that would, it seems like a logical conclusion.
Well, and we're going to have more accounts too.
Right.
You know, with those apartments.
Sure.
We're going to add
Okay.
Several accounts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve amending the 1982 lease agreement with Kansas Children's Service League, or KCSL. KCSL is looking to sell the building, which was built on the property originally leased in 1982 due to the fact that it, or due to the fact that it no longer fits their needs. The governing body is being asked to either sell the property to KCSL, allowing them to keep the proceeds, assigning the lease to a prospective buyer or extend the lease to help sell the property. KCSL representatives will be available today to review their plans and the proposal with the governing body. So last October, the governing body considered a similar request from Russell Child Development Center for their leased property immediately north of the KCSL site. The governing body's action in that matter was to authorize the mayor to sign the deed at the time of closing and allow RCDC to receive full value of the property. Since KCSL was the original beneficiary of a long-term lease, as was RCDC, similar action by the governing body to transfer the property to KCSL and the, and the viewpoint of the staff and, and your legal counsel would be appropriate. So your alternatives, as we see them, are to transfer the property to KCSL at the price of $1 or other value established by the governing body. Alternative two, authorize the mayor to sign the deed to a prospective buyer at the time of closing. Or three, allow the lease to be transferred to a new buyer at a rate to be determined prior to closing. Before you can defer the action at a later date, which would still probably yield the same three alternatives. Staff doesn't have a specific recommendation other than, I do believe we're all in agreement that the original beneficiary of this long-term lease was KCSL and any benefit of any transaction should, should stay with that agency. I believe you'll hear from KCSL representatives, but as we understand their specific request of the governing body, they would like you to consider option one. So I'll invite anybody from KCSL up to speak to the issue.
Hello and thank you for your time. My name is Zachary Schultz, I'm an attorney here in Garden City. I'm here today in my capacity as a member of our local Head Start and Early Head Start Policy Council. I also serve on the State Board of Directors for the Kansas Children's Service League and have been asked to assist KCSL in this matter. As Mr. Allen noted, a similar transaction was completed with the Russell Child Development Center last fall. It's my understanding that that was done for a price of $1. The reason that KCSL is requesting the city to transfer it to KCSL in order for us to transfer it to a prospective buyer is due to the unique funding from the federal government for Head Start and Early Head Start. Head Start and Early Head Start serves, I want to say between 300 and 500 kids here in southwest Kansas, over 100 here in Garden City. I want to say we have approximately 25 employees here in Garden City, including our administrative offices, which are currently located at this Ballenger property. Those offices and jobs will remain in our community. Believe that we are going to be renting a new commercial office space that's being built. We anticipate moving those offices in September to October, depending on the, when construction is finished later this fall. We do not at this time have a buyer identified for this property. But obviously, we're waiting on the city to tell us what the city is willing to do before we could go market the property. The lease signed in 1982 was not assignable, except with the consent of the city. That's part of the reason why I'm here today. Going back to the funding from the federal government for Head Start and Early Head Start, KCSL is required to raise either through contributions or in-kind contributions of time, services, property, when we are able to get it for below-market rates. For every $3 the federal government gives us, we have to raise $1 ourselves. And transferring it to KCSL at the requested amount of $1 would allow us to then take the market value of that property and to claim that as in-kind contributions and stretch our federal funding further. Kansas Children's Service League is a statewide organization. Head Start and Early Head Start is only done here in southwest Kansas. We serve, I believe, 18 counties. But the majority here in, in Finney County and in Seward County down in Liberal. The majority of these dollars would stay in our community, serving our local children and would allow us to stretch our federal funding further. So we would ask that, that the city transfer that property to us so then that we can market and sell it and stretch our funding further. Can I answer any questions for anybody?
Just, did we, on the Russell Child Development one, did we actually give them at the price of a dollar or did we sign that over?
Randy can speak to that. My understanding was we had the mayor show up at closing and sign the deed.
I think either I prepared a deed and signed by the mayor or did it at closing or did it prior there too.
So either one of these would work.
Yes.
Mayor, I'll author, make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the deed to the prospective buyer at the time of closing.
There's been a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the deed to a prospective buyer at the time of closing? Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
There's been a second, any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to ratify the emergency purchase of a new Blade server. So the IT and communications staff had budgeted for a new Blade server to be purchased in 2019. I believe you're all aware of that. The Blade server houses nearly all of the city's document storage and provides network access for all computers on the city's network. On July 21st, the current server began to fail and after several hours, IT and communications staff were able to put some temporary fixes in place. That repeated itself a couple more times, or at least one more time. IT and communications staff, beginning that weekend with some phone calls, contacted myself, Assistant City Manager Cunningham, Finance Director Hitz. And then when the work week began, we implemented an emergency replacement of the server. Since this, since the server failure occurred between Commission meetings, I had made the decision to proceed with the purchase. The staff requested bids on a quick turnaround and the three bids were received as shown. The, we ordered the server from Converged One for $153,203.67 on July 25th. And the purchasing contracting manual, which is part of our overall financial management policies, requires that emergency purchases be authorized as any other purchase. As the cost exceeds, the department heads authority and the city manager's authority, the governing body, in accordance with our purchasing and contracting manual, would have been the appropriate body to take the action. However, you couldn't meet in a time that would constitute what we believed, or I believed was an emergency. So we're going to try to work up the whole emergency purchase language change to our purchasing and contracting manual. In the interim, what we're asking you to do on this agenda item is ratify the decision that that was an appropriate purchase. Item two, or alternative two would be to not ratify that decision and then we'll figure out what happens later. The, certainly my recommendation, but the staff recommendation is that you would ratify that decision. And so the amount, just to let you know how we'll juggle it between the budgets, we do have a community trust fund that carries about a $2 million balance, designed for being responsive. I think it's original to, designed to be responsive during times of emergency or uncertainty. From time to time, it's been used as a bit of a loan, internal loan fund where there's a repayment schedule from another fund back to the community trust over time. This probably fits both definitions, I would say. And we would anticipate making the expense in 2018 from the community trust fund. And then in 2019, where this line item is actually showing up in that budget, make a repayment to the community trust fund.
I did have a quick, oh.
Go ahead.
A quick question. Those are greatly divergent bids.
They are.
How much did we originally budget? And I'm just wondering, I mean, this was for the same similar type equipment. There are just 200, 300,000 dollar differences, but we got what we needed.
The original budget was 150,000.
So we, we, okay.
So will that be in one single payment in, from the 2019 budget or will you pay it over time or?
Yeah, because it's budgeted, it just
It'll just be reimbursed. I'll make the motion, we approve or ratify the city manager's action on this emergency item.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you.
Really good work by our IT staff during the emergency to get, one, the temporary fixes back up and running on a couple different occasions and then two, to, while they were doing that, kind of, kind of raise the, the solution to the attention of, of the rest of us. So we appreciate that. Item, let's see, 12D, I think. The governing body is asked to consider an additional distribution of funds for the Downtown Development Fund for 122 North Main Street.
Be noted that Commissioner Finkhauser is stepping down from the bench on this item.
Caleb?
All right, as you have in your packet, this is a request, a first for this program in additional funds. The GON submitted an application for the Downtown Development Fund in October of 2017. The requested funds were for the interior remodel and exterior facades updated at 122 North Main Street. When the application was submitted in October of 2017, the cost of renovation and professional fee was estimated to be $141,500. On November 9th, 2017, the city commission awarded this project $56,600, which was a 40% reimbursement based on the matrix for the Downtown Development Fund. After starting the project, the GONS discovered there were further unanticipated issues associated with renovating the space to bring it up to code and to adjust for these additional expenses. These unanticipated issues included replacing water and sewer lines, electrical throughout the building and utility meters. Due to these unanticipated issues, the cost of the renovation is now estimated at $265,000. The GONS are requesting to receive an additional funding at the amended renovation cost. In the original request, the scoring metric was used to provide a total score of 29 points. With 29 points, the project ranked with a 40% reimbursement level, which equaled $56,600, which was given. If we keep the same category and classify it at the same score, it would still rate at a 40% reimbursement level. But at the new rate, the, for the total of 265,000, that would bring the total up to 106,000, which would be an additional $49,400 from the Downtown Development Fund. This was the fourth Downtown Development Fund application of 2017. The governing body, like I said, this is kind of new ground. We've never done this before and so the governing body may fund the additional award amount of $49,400. The governing body may, may fund additional funds at a different amount or the governing body may deny their request for additional funds in the Downtown Development Fund. We included in your staff report the letter from the GONS that we received, their copy of their plans, original plans, their agreement, as well as the cost of all other downtown development projects to date. And I believe their project is the highest awarded so far at their level of $56,600 of any projects, of all the projects that have been awarded the Downtown Development Fund. So I know they, we have representatives here and staff's here to answer any questions you might have.
On, in the past, we've had several, about a whole bunch, three or four different projects that have exceeded this amount several times and we've always capped them off at $50,000. And, and that's what, that's what's been our target, I think, as high as we would really want to go. But to me, is this an additional? I mean, is this something here that we're looking at? This would be in a separate from the first one, which would be two. I, I, I put it, to put it equally, or simply, there'd be two times drawing out of the till.
Yes, what we would do is actually just amend the original agreement and add this additional $49,000 to it. But yes, that would be the concern and some of the concerns in staff is, with this request would be is how many others of the projects that had come forward would also come forward and request additional fundings with the limited budget that you have established for the program. But no one's ever asked and so we talked to the applicants and we suggested, well, you can always ask and, and see what direction that
Do we have anything in writing that says how often you can apply?
As far as that goes, it's by a project and it's really, as soon as one project's over, technically someone could reapply. There's, you have established, this is a fairly new program. We, we, we left a lot of strings unattached on this program and it's been pretty flexible. You've modified it a couple times already of how you operate and the program by adding the matrix and some of the other things. Because that was the concern is how much money to make sure that we have enough to go around to all other projects that may have needs or wants that for this.
I'm curious about how this, I know because part of I'm curious about how this, I know, because part of this, from what I understood, they were going to use for the Eighth Street Improvement Project. How will, will that impact on what can be done on Eighth Street or the potential of that project? If we award additional dollars out of this fund, or?
Well, the, the, the funding of that is separated right now, but it's at the such time when the Eighth Street project proceeds is what, when you guys have that decision come before you, if, that was, has been discussed, is whether you'll use the remainder of these funds that haven't been used for that project. So, but if you look through, we have the list, we gave you the list of all the projects, the total costs that were there, the equivalent cost in projects and how much was awarded. So really, it's up to, like I said, this is new, it's, it's a, it's your program that the governing body requested staff work with downtown vision to create, and, and I think the, the question before you is, is whether or not we add, allow applicants, I guess, to come in and ask for additional funding for projects as the, as they have them come up.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just keep talking right today.
That's all right.
I, I think, you know, my question always about the downtown development fund has been, are these dollars being used with the intent that we originally set forth? Is it going towards a major renovation or a major change in downtown? And I guess, while, while saying yes, this is over what we've traditionally given before, I did kind of see it as a second phase, even though it's with the primary project, because it was kind of this additional stuff that came up. And I guess, in looking at those other award amounts, I look at the scales of the project as well, and this seems to be a pretty major scale project, and so I think that's worth consideration as we talk about, you know, this unique situation. But I do think it fulfills that, you know, the matrix and the intent of why we have those dollars, absolutely.
Well, I think that's, that's one of the issues that come up, especially with our projects in downtown and older buildings. You're going to run into issues, actually several projects ran into issues that they didn't anticipate with additional cost. And as is stated in their letter, they ran into those costs, they expended those dollars for that part of it, to get those things up, and they need the additional funds to finish up the things that they actually had budgeted for. And so some of these things are actually already done, some of these costs are already incurred, and so, but as I said, this is a new program, and how you decide to use those funds and expend those dollars is, is up to you on that. As far as, there is one stipulation, as far as if awarded funds, the applicant will be ineligible to apply for this fund for two years from the date of the completion of the other project.
So it's all about.
So.
The one, the, okay, the project at one twenty-two, or do they have another project?
This, this project at one twenty-two would be.
Right.
Eligible for two years, then they could reapply.
Yes.
Hello, I'm Rod Furking from Rod Furking Construction, I'm the contractor for GONs. Mike just switched from my ear, hey, get up, say some words. So bear with me.
Okay.
I just want to interrate, it did go over budget, it's almost twice as much, but it's nothing cosmetic. What this is, is electrical, gas, water, sewer. The problem is, we start at one twenty-two North Main, and it actually, there's two parts of that building. The other half is on Fulton Street. So we have to cross in the other half of that building, all the utilities are on the east side of the building. So we have to go all the way over into the, into the alley to catch all this. We tried to Band-Aid this stuff, it's, that building's so old, it, we decided, we needed a building that's going to be there for several years, so we need to just completely replace everything and do it correctly. We could have Band-Aided it, and I think that they would have fought problems for years on this thing. We do have a, I think they do have a signed lease on a clothing stores going in, which is great, another business for downtown. But this does, it's kind of like you said, Commissioner, this is kind of, it's kind of a two-part thing, because it kind of flowed into the other half of the building, and there's talks of doing something with it as well. But basically, it's non-cosmetic is what it is, it's all the infrastructure, is what we're asking for, is what we went over. You know, if we, if we went over budget and we're putting in ceramic tile and some good fun stuff down there, I get that, but it's, it's one of those unexpected costs that nobody's seen. And, you know, as a contractor, we always have to give the burden of the bad news for that. So it's just, you know, they always have a saying, we, we know how to add and multiply, we don't know how to subtract and divide. That's us contractors. But it's one of those things we, it's, it's a necessity to, to get it replaced and do it right. So that's why we're asking for additional funding. And it is a little unorthodox, I don't think it's been done for, but it is kind of a second phase into this thing. And like I say, there's, there's a lot of talk of what we're going to do with the other half of the building, I think we've already got some ideas on it, and hopefully we'll proceed on with that. You guys have any questions?
I, I guess, the question, I guess, the original was for one, the one twenty-two, the, the address at one twenty-two.
Right. But the utilities crossed through on a Fulton address, that's the other half of the building, on the east half.
The plans were originally developed as the, the whole building, but as is stated, that the building can be subdivided into two sections, a back section that's off of Fulton Street and the front section, that's all included in your packet with their original applications.
And we put in the irate smoke wall to separate those two buildings.
So I'm also seeing they have applications for a couple of other locations, and so those have been awarded also, is that correct? The two thousand fourteen and two thousand sixteen Main Street?
Yes, those are, those are different buildings, different block.
It looks like there were two awards there, so I was confused. There was one that was in eleven thirty of two thousand fifteen for fifty thousand, and there was again another award on, it looks like eight two of sixteen.
Yeah, may I speak?
Sure.
Hi, I'm Alicia Gian-Micholas, Commissioners Mayor. Thank you. Yes, that was actually an amendment to our original application. At the beginning, we had, it's the, where Roots Juice Co. is located now, that's the building. We had applied originally because we wanted to do the upstairs apartments as well, but we weren't, the funds weren't enough to do that. So we amended that application, and then it was just for the, for the facade and the renovation of two sixteen North Main. So we excluded, we retracted our, our application to do the upstairs apartments, because it just wasn't sufficient enough funds to do something like that in a, in a building that large. So that's what happened there, because I believe we were the first downtown development fund applicant awarded for that building. So, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's how that was, was it was split and we, one was withdrawn and it was just done for the facade and the bottom portion.
Yeah. And if I may, I'd like to say something about that corner building there. That corner building, well, in the last, it sat empty for quite a while. And so it was quite exciting to be able to apply for the downtown development fund, because if that, if we are able to do the construction that is necessary for it, we will have four, four businesses on that corner, when once that was nothing there. And that is a very important corner lot, because it is right next to the new brewery across the street there. It is ten thousand square feet. It is a huge building, and if we can put four different businesses down there, well, three technically, with Escape the Clock is down there, then Tumbleweed, and they will be doing some consignment with antiques there, so it's kind of three and a half businesses. And then the additional four thousand square foot space in the back, which is one-ten Fulton, then we can have a, a full corner lot. And if we are developing that corner and that end of the street there, we don't want just a brewery and a bunch of empty buildings around that. We want that to be full, we want that to be a place where people come to Escape the Clock, they go down to shop, they go to the brewery. That is also a very strategic development point there, and we are just trying, because honestly, we would not have gone forward with that if we would have known how incredibly expensive it was, honestly. It was, it was a lot. So it was a shock to us to realize, once you got under there, once you started digging, what we had to do.
One of the reasons why we developed this fund is because of those issues like that with the downtown, and.
Right.
Created this fund for those particular issues. I guess we're trying to work through this, where this is, this is a new.
Sure.
Kind of twist to what we have to come up with.
Yeah, definitely, and that was part of the matrix, your question also about the fifty thousand, I was on the downtown board at the time that we worked on the business development part of creating the matrix, because that was a difference. Because if you have a ten thousand square foot building that's requesting fifty thousand dollars and you have a, or more, or and you have a fifteen hundred square foot place that's also requesting that, there's a difference there. There, that's why we created the matrix in the second year of the downtown development, and then, well, Downtown Vision worked on that and then brought it to the commission for, to adopt that. Because of the scale, the differences in sizes of businesses and their needs, so we thought that the matrix would do that. So therefore, in the first year, it was fifty thousand, and then above that, there, that's what the matrix allowed for, larger scale projects. Yes.
Quick question, Caleb, do we have any other projects or applications for this fund, for this year?
I'll let Melissa respond to that one.
Okay, Melissa.
We have plenty of people that come and inquire about the, the fund. One of the problems that we see are setbacks that some of the new business owners have is because they have to have twenty thousand dollars worth of investment to be able to apply or estimate the value of their conditions. A lot of times we hear, I want to just replace a few windows and upgrade some facades, which helps make downtown nice and beautiful, but the cost of those renovations really sometimes are price pointed so low that they don't apply towards using this type of funding source.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Caleb, is, how many unfinished projects do we have going at this time? And if we do that with this one, how many of them could tack on?
Well, I, I think that's a question we don't know, as far as how many people would come back and say, well, if we can ask, then we may come back and ask for additional fundings. I don't know that, but I believe, I believe there's about four open projects currently that are under, underway in different stages.
So is, so the reason this one is so large is because of the, to the extent that they had to replace? Is that why this one is?
Yeah.
Went so over budget, or what they anticipated?
As we looked at it, as, as, as they gave us in their letter, the expenses that they incurred, the, a part of the issues that they incurred had, had been, the existing water and sewer lines were found to be in, in, in bad condition, and they needed to be replaced. The cost of the additional meters to separate the, the building out, and some of those things were, what was cited, the natural gas line and, and some of the other structural items, has, has been stated, it's not really cosmetic things, these are kind of the, some of the structural things of dividing it up and, and having it into two buildings, has been stated, this is one of, you know, if we look at our downtown development fund, that's why it scored so high on the matrix before, because it's been vacant for so long, and, and seeing this get done is great, and so, but at the same time, we also understand the limitations of the funding that we have for the pro, program and how you want it to proceed and how you answer the question when others may or may not come in to ask the same question.
How long do the funds stay? I mean, so is this the last year that, because I don't, did we, we have the funding on this?
It was budgeted again for this year, an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was budgeted for it, I believe is the, the dollar amount that was there. Melinda may correct me.
I don't believe that there was money set aside in two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
For the program.
Say one last thing. Regardless of what you decide, I just want to thank you all so much for what you have already given. It has made a huge difference in, I believe, the future of, of downtown. In the last two years, we've seen ten different businesses open up down there or relocate down there, and some that didn't take advantage of the downtown development fund, I believe, were influenced by, by the, by what was happening downtown. And if you, if there's any way to keep, keep something like this going in the future, find a way to do this, I believe that downtown will really position itself as the cultural center of our community that is developing so much. So I would just like to thank you for everything you have already done, and if there's any way to continue this, I think we'll really see that renaissance downtown continue. Thank you.
Caleb, I have just a couple questions. The work that I'm reading here on that line, and I'm waiting on final inspection, was that for the, sort of the part of the building where the original project was, or is that the whole thing, which includes where?
There may be a new storefront, or will be a new storefront? This, this project is a single project, it's a, it's a single structure, single, considered a single structure, single project, and single permit. So we're just waiting for them to get to the point that they're ready to call us for a final and be able to get the businesses in there.
Is there, my understanding of listening to the GON's description of one twenty-two North Main would be that there would be more than one storefront there, though?
That's what they're dividing it into, is to have the potential to have it subdivided into different units if they so choose to do that, and I think that's part of the cost was, if you add separate meters for each one of those units to have, be separate units, whereas this was initially thought of as a, as a single project.
So it wouldn't be out of the realm of possibility, like the Miller Building had multiple awards, now one of them was turned back, but at one point in time, there were multiple amounts awarded to, to that building, there could be, I guess, if the commission's trying to find a line of logic to fund it, that doesn't completely abandon either what they've established in their develop, or their agreement with the GONs for one twenty-two North Main, or the program as it's been administered for the last three years in general, the notion that there's more than one storefront, and some of the overrun was related to extending those utilities over to the other storefront, does that make sense?
So are there three, are there four different addresses, or just one single address?
There's, there's two, there's a Fulton Street address to this building, and there's a, there's a Main Street address to this building. That would be a logical way, if you wanted to.
Then the only barrier is saying, you know, one, it's expenses after the fact, which isn't in the way the program was designed to be administered, and two, you can apply for two, but there needs to be multiple years in between, I think, or something has to be completed. Although it appears the commission's has a history of deviating from that, since the Millers, the Miller Building had two award.
Two separate buildings.
In the same year.
In the same year, one was withdrawn.
Right. But they were both awarded.
Yes.
I, you know, I, I have some concern, but I also feel, you know, it's a concern to the point that I'd like to see staff go back and review, review this and to look at what we can do in the future, maybe when this may pop up again. But I also see the importance of that corner, that if we don't do something with that corner, that could very well maybe not develop the way it should be and as far as it should be, and we would probably lose out on that. And I think it's, if we, I feel that, in my opinion, that I will go along with, and if I can make a motion, I would like to make a motion if there's no other discussions. I'd like to make, okay, I'd like to make a motion that the governing body, fund the additional award amount for forty-nine thousand four hundred dollars.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, any other discussion on that item?
I do want to say also, I, I think the idea of also this fund is that a lot of businesses take advantage of it, and so this idea, again, making sure that when, you know, they're extending the circumstances, and the one thing that's really swaying me is your commitment to downtown. And so that means a lot, and I think revitalization of downtown is, is very, very important. And so I think that's, that's really what's really swaying my decision, too.
Any other discussion? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We could have Commissioner Finkhauser come back to the bench. He's been gone. Looks like we got two executive sessions. We also, you're needing to add an item to.
Yeah.
The agenda.
It's not a business item, but more of an item of awareness, so the minutes will likely reflect this into the petitions, memorials, and remonstrances. Mr. Dwayne West brought to me a request to give to the city commission, I'll read it to you. We, the under sign, places of business east of US eighty-three four hundred bypass and south of KS one fifty-six highway east of the overpass. Respectfully ask that you use your influence as our elected representatives to secure permission from K dot four and construction of an eastbound one-way exit from the northbound US eighty-three four hundred two lane exit road from eighty-three four hundred to northbound Larue Street and an adjacent northbound right turn only exit from Larue back onto the northbound US eighty-three four hundred lane. We make this request in the interest of reducing the traffic. We make this request in the interest of reducing the traffic problems and congestion that results from the northbound vehicles presently being required to pass through the K 156 light to reach the light at Walmart and Applebee's, Sam's Club, American AT&amp;T phone business, Home Depot, Pastotnik Law Office, ANW Drive-In, Freddie Frozen Custard and the Rib Crib south of Sam's. There's a list then of those businesses named with signatures for, uh, appears six of them. Um, and so, uh, Mr. West asked that you be presented that. Um, he couldn't be in attendance at the meeting and, uh, we wanted to make sure you were aware of that. It would have come as part of the petitions, memorials and remonstrances.
There's, there's a meeting? You said it.
There's no meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
We have two executive sessions, it looks like.
We do the first.
And we'll move on to, uh, commissioner comments, so you don't have to do those afterwards.
That'd be fine.
So, Commissioner Dale, you're up first.
Okay, tonight is, uh, is Tuesday night. It's national, uh, night out in, in, uh, Garden City is, uh, gonna celebrate that tonight. Our first responders and the city commissioners will be out touring around the city. I understand there's a number increase from last year. I think it's almost doubled. And so I, I look forward to get out and with, uh, first responders and my fellow commissioners and meeting my neighbors throughout the city and, and, uh, enjoying in the festivities. And for those that, uh, didn't do it this year, uh, please sign up and do it next year. Uh, great pre-meeting at the airport, some, some exciting things, uh, are being worked upon and plans for the, uh, possible addition or a brand new airport out there, terminal. Uh, looks exciting and I think it'll be great. I hope that, uh, we can put that together and bring that to, uh, bear honor city. Thank you.
Commissioner Enru.
So I want to just remind, I was able to do the first Friday food trucks and so I'm, I'm not going to talk about healthy, so that's not, but, uh, it's a lot of fun. Um, I would say that if we had music, that would even make it more fun. Um, but I love, um, seeing people out in the community out there on that Friday and Stevens Park just highlights what a beautiful area that is. Um, also I was, um, at the big pool and, um, recently we had a lot of baseball teams in and I'm going to tell you, these people absolutely loved our facility. They had never had so much fun. Um, the other thing I thought was really neat is had a lot of people come down for the, uh, the triathlon and they, well-run, so, uh, you know, congratulations on a well-run triathlon. But one guy said, he goes, I've never swam in a pool so clean. So I just, I said, that's how it is. That's how it is in Garden City. Um, also national night out, I'm excited to drive around and see our community and what a neat opportunity. Also, it's not, it's not too late. My vote sticker is somewhere in the building, but, um, it's not too late to vote, so I encourage you to get out and vote and it's, it's an important part of our democracy. So, that's all.
Commissioner Burns.
I don't think I have anything else to add. They pretty much hit everything, so, thank you. Good meeting today.
Commissioner Finkhauser.
Well, I'd just like to echo that, uh, pre-meeting. I thought that was, uh, outstanding and hopefully we can get a grant, uh, to pay for 90% of it. Um, also, I noticed sales tax looked like it was up quite a bit. And also we're bringing in what, 1,100,000 on the, what we voted on, the .3.
That's exactly right. And the county is almost the same amount, so, uh, that .30 new sales tax. Uh, currently we have a little over 400,000 and that's, uh, just with two months of collections. Uh, so you are running a little bit higher than what we had anticipated for 2018, which is always good news.
So keep shopping Garden City.
Yes. Right. Thank you, that's all.
Just wanted to mention that I attended the police officers' penning. Congratulations to the officers that were promoted. Commissioner Dale was also there, um, but a great ceremony. I think it's great to see, uh, people getting promoted with inside our departments, um, doing a great job. So congratulations to all of the officers that have advanced and were promoted, um, in their certain areas in the police department. City staff's out painting lines for the crosswalks. That means that they're getting ready for the start of school. Just want to remind everybody as the police department has that, uh, school will be starting Tuesday, August 14th. The school zones will be active, so please remember to slow down. I know during the summertime, we kind of get into that routine of just zipping through those, but, uh, they'll be active as well as be mindful of the crossing guards at the heavier intersections as they do try to get our students across those intersections. One big thing is that the, once those school, uh, zones are active, the fines do double, so be mindful of that. Um, as the other commissioners have pointed out, it is national night out and we'll be out and about visiting. And as one of the other commissioners mentioned, please go out and vote if you have not done so. It's, uh, very important that we do get out. It's part of your voice of electing the officials that represent you, so please get out and vote. The polls are open until seven o'clock this evening. And that's all I have. Oh, I wanted to mention one other thing. The, if you haven't noticed, and I know Commissioner Finkhauser and I kind of tested it out during the town hall meeting, which was kind of fun and interesting, but we do have a new sound system, a new, uh, video system, which we're still kind of working with and everything. So, um, Ashley's shaking her head yes, and you can see we're kind of adjusting the mics and everything, so, um, please bear with us, but I think it's helping a lot better. I think people can hear us a little better and, or a lot better than what they have in the past, as well as, um, we're on different mediums as well. And Ashley's coming forward to probably mention a little bit more of what's going on with this.
Sure. Um, I will let you know that we had some problems with, um, this microphone and the other wireless microphone at the beginning of the meeting. They weren't going out onto our broadcasts for whatever reason, um, but we tried several different troubleshooting techniques and one of them finally worked. So, um, now we'll try that troubleshooting technique first next time. So, um, as you mentioned, we are working out the kinks still. Um, one of those is making sure when we have people up here, they adjust the microphone to their height and don't stand over here and talk because that won't be picked up to, from our broadcasts. Um, the different mediums that we are currently using, we are broadcasting live to Facebook, we are broadcasting live to YouTube and we are broadcasting live to Novus, um, in addition, of course, to Channel Eight. So, um, all of those are active and functioning today.
And then the other neat thing is, is now we do have the ability to broadcast in the big meeting room across the hall too, so we can have more meetings, uh, broadcast on, on the, on all those mediums and everything as well, so.
We do, yeah. Um, anybody who, uh, follows our Facebook closely, um, will know that last week we did some, um, some test broadcasts from this room and from the meeting room, um, to make sure that all of, hopefully all of the kinks are worked out. I'm sure we'll experience, um, some more issues to troubleshoot once we do start broadcasting from that room. Um, but there are two, two cool features over there. Um, we now have the ability to have a, a true overflow capacity in the meeting room when we have large crowds. Um, they don't have that TV delay anymore because there is a direct feed from this room to that room. Um, and we could do vice versa and feed from that room to this room if we ever wanted to. Um, but as you mentioned, Mayor, um, in the future, we will be able to broadcast meetings from the meeting room as well.
Sounds good. I just wanted to mention that, so if people notice that it is a lot louder or clearer or whatever it is, but, uh, we do, we are working those, working through that, so bear with us as we kind of modify and fine tune, uh, the audio and video system that we just purchased, so. On that note, we'll look at a, going into our first executive session.
Yeah, Mayor and Commissioners, the staff requests that the governing body consider entering into an executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B2 pertaining to consultation with an attorney for the body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, uh, and the specific purpose, Randy?
Contract negotiations.
And, uh, Mayor and Commissioners, I would ask that in addition to Randy and myself, that we include Mike Muirhead and Jennifer Cunningham.
I'll make the motion that we approve. What was?
For about 30 minutes or less.
Fifteen. Yes.
Do you want to take the break first and then make the motion? We'll take the break, we'll take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 2:40, well, 2:50.